I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education for Thursday, April 5, 2018. The present is Ms. Lieper, Mrs. Gerber, myself Philip Dwyer, Mrs. Jacobson, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Maxon Cunelli, and Mr. Peterson. We do have two people absent because we know of them. If I could have you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and if you would remain standing for a little bit afterwards.
... the flag of the United States of America. The Republic urges standing. One nation under God, in the best of...
One of our board members is absent, Ms. Tricia Pitko, because her father passed away. I wanted to take this moment to offer her condolences and ask for a moment of silence. We start off with the best part of this meeting, which is student reports. So, Mr. O'Brien, do you want to start?
Mr. Orban is not here today.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Rivera.
Yeah, sure, I'll kick it off.
I didn't see the seat on the other side of you. My apologies.
It's quite all right. It's a compliment. He's a very successful man. So SATs occurred on March 24th, 21st. We are very grateful that we were able to get that out of the way, because I know a lot of neighboring towns will have to wait till the 24th to get their SATs done. And our ninth and 10th grade dance with over 400 attendees occurred about two Fridays ago, I believe. And the second annual conference of our Achievement Gap Task Force for Fairfield Board was held on Thursday, March 29 at the Southern Connecticut State University, a special venue for this year's conference. And several schools in the area participated: Greenwich Bridgeport, Meriden Ridgefield, Fairfield University, and Southern Connecticut State University. We are very proud to get that moving. Spring sports are up and running despite the weather, as I can tell you for a fact. I just came back from a track meet, and to say the least, at least it's nice to have some wind under your wings while you're running. Ted and Mr. Ebling will be arriving in the next hour, hopefully, with a victory in our Ludlow Ward lacrosse game. And on Monday, April 2, we had our solar carport ribbon cutting ceremony, attended by many local officials. And between our carports and the panels, we are supplied with about 2/3 of our electric power. And finally, everybody is looking forward to a full April break despite many of the snow days.
Thank you very much. Any questions for our representative from Ward? Okay, thank you. Ludlow, who wants to go first?
I will. So, two weeks ago, the cheerleaders competed in Orlando, and they won the overall grand champion trophy, the high point trophy, and national championships in the varsity advanced division. So they are now ranked first in the grand national division. On last Wednesday, AP literature classes from both Ward and Ludlow took a combined trip to the Museum of Modern Art, where they learned about postmodernism, which supplements the novels that have been read in class. And they were able to take a private museum tour before it was open to the public. Juniors recently took the NSGG science test to help prepare them for the new national standards. And today was the Red Cross Club's spring blood drive. There were over 30 donators, and I spoke with the class president, the club president, who was extremely happy with the turnout.
So, on March 24, the GOV students took a trip to DC for the March For Our Lives, which is a really cool experience, and we all benefited from it. We got to meet up with Representative Jim Himes, and it was really fun and really cool. We also have a few college fairs coming up. There's the large college fair at Webster Bank Arena. And then, at our own school, we're having a community college fair on April 20. And NCC, Hughes, Atonic, and Gateway are coming in for presentations about applying, transferring, and the benefits of community college. And also, specific programs at the schools are coming in, and it's going to be like a fair style in the library, where they can tell the students about the specific programs. And there's also two other programs coming in for apprenticeships and employment after high school. And lastly, the GSA club went to True Colors on March 16, which is the largest LGBTQ conference in the country, and it's at UConn. And it's a really cool place to go, and you go to little workshops, and you learn more. And it's really fun, and it's really cool to be able to go.
Thank you very much. Any questions for our students from Ludlow? Nope? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is a presentation on the science curriculum. And so, does Superintendent want to make any comments before they come up?
I'll just thank them in advance before they even start, because I know they've worked so hard on it. And thank you, and I was able to see several of the science teachers earlier tonight. But thank you for all of the work that's gone into this.
My name is Mike Cummings, and I'm the chief academic officer. In May of 2016, Dr. Pugliese and Shiloh Farrar presented to the Board of Education the new social studies curriculum. In December 2017, the high school headmasters presented the academic expectations. Last month, you heard from both of our technology educations and our library media specialists, who provided you curriculum updates in their particular areas. In each of those presentations, you heard the same words: inquiry, real world, problem solving, and engagement. Tonight, Ms. Fajella and Mr. Wakeman, along with some of our teachers, will present the next-generation science standards curriculum as it impacts our Fairfield Public Schools. You will hear those same words this evening. While the importance of curriculum content persists, the application of that content across curricular areas is new, exciting, and challenging. There is a community of skills that unite our instruction and our student learning. I now turn the presentation over to our program directors and the teachers.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. And thank you to the Board of Education for inviting us here tonight. We're very excited about this opportunity to bring forward the pre-K through grade 12 science curriculum documents. My name's Walter Wakeman. I am the program director for elementary science, mathematics, and enrichment.
And I'm Patrice Fajella. I'm the director of K-12 STEAM and 6th through 12th science. In addition, we're also excited about presenting the framework for our grades 3 through 5 STEAM program. We've had over 100 teachers, administrators, and community members involved in this process of rewriting our program. We'd like to thank all of those who are here tonight to support this work, and ask them to stand and be recognized.
So, here's an overview of our presentation for this evening. We'll take you through the journey that we've been on in creating these documents, and how they... I will share with you what we did to prepare and research for these documents. We'll also talk a little bit about the next-generation science standards, and how the performance expectations are constructed. We'll also help make connections, as Mr. Cummings referenced a moment ago, to the other content areas. Then we will have a closer look at the science and engineering practices, and what they actually mean in the classroom. And then we'll dive into the documents that you have before you, and then we'll talk a little bit about evaluation and next steps.
In this quote, the late Stephen Hawking emphasized the importance of discovery in science as a way to broaden our knowledge. This is exactly what our new standards are asking of our students and teachers. The last revision of the program was in 2006, 2007. It's hard to believe. That was early on in my career here. Here you can see the evolution of science education from the 1990s until today. Though our current program is rigorous, aligning our new program to the next-generation science standards will have many benefits for our students, including creating better thinkers and problem solvers. Students will also have the opportunity to transfer those skills that Mr. Cummings referred to, across many disciplines, such as math, social studies, technology education, and more. We see many opportunities to work together with our library media specialists as well.
As Ms. Fajella just mentioned, our curriculum documents were adopted in 2006 and 2007. These next-generation science standards were adopted by the state of Connecticut in 2015. These documents have provided us with a vertical alignment, greater vertical alignment, pre-K through grade 12. The new curricula, similar to the Common Core Mathematics and Common Core Language Arts, were designed to help students with college and career readiness. They provide students with more opportunities and choice based on interests, potential career paths in high school, and there's more opportunity for cross-content convergence.
My name is Amy Lacy, and I'm a math-science teacher at Stratfield Elementary. As you can see, our teachers have been working on curriculum development from the beginning of 2014 to the present. We convened writing committees of teachers, led by our program directors, who have also held parent focus groups to get feedback from the community. The documents were then revised this fall, based on feedback from both parents and teachers. In Fairfield, we worked with groups of teachers to learn more about the shifts and expectations of the new standards before we began to write the curriculum documents. We had many professional opportunities for teachers at all three levels: elementary, middle, and high school, using in-house expertise, conferences and training sessions, and through the use of consultants. This included sending a number of teachers to NGSSX training, which stands for Next Generation Science Exemplar-Based Professional Learning Systems. I have been very excited to learn more about the next-generation science standards. At one of the many professional development opportunities I attended, it was inspiring to see teachers, side by side, investigating waves. Through open-ended exploration, we observed the effects of placing a tuning fork in water. The resulting phenomena sparked our curiosity, and we were fascinated as the sound waves rippled through the water. Through our own questions, we began to explore how sound waves affected the movement of water. This relates to a number of scientific concepts, including energy transfer, as well as how sound waves travel through different mediums. In these slides, you can see elementary, middle, and high school teachers investigating the new science standards as if they were the students. This helps them to better understand how students will experience science as they sort or classify shells, or explore the effects of force and motion on a ping-pong ball. These new science standards place a greater emphasis on inquiry and phenomena, while using active involvement to support and enhance concept development.
Now, let's get into how these new standards are different than the previous Connecticut science standards. The NGSS is not a set of daily standards, but a set of expectations for what students should be able to do by the end of instruction, years, or grade bands. So the performance expectations set the learning goals for students, but do not describe how students will get there. Grade bands are broken into K through 2, 3 through 5, middle school, and high school. During the forum on the vision of a graduate that was held recently, many of our community members were calling for just these types of skills. The standards are of three types, and you can see the color codes up there. I'll refer to those in several upcoming slides. The science and engineering practices are in blue, and those are what students are doing. The disciplinary core ideas are in orange, and those are typical science content and domains. And the cross-cutting concepts are in green. Those are the big ideas that pervade all of science. The disciplinary core ideas may be most familiar as the domains of science: earth and space science, physical science, and life science. The Fairfield documents mirror the three dimensions of the next-generation science Also, the science practices you see here are very well-aligned with the College Board's science practices. Obviously, science is a content-based subject. We still expect our students to have content knowledge, but we also expect them to apply that knowledge and synthesize information to create new solutions to problems. Next, we will show you one particular standard related to heredity, and how it develops through a student's experience. You will see each component of the three dimensions, which are color-coded, embedded in the standard. So I'm going to give you a moment. You have three documents in front of you. I'm going to ask you to please turn to page 6 of the grade 3 document, page 8 of the grade 7 document, and page 7 of the biology document. And I'm going to point your attention to the box that is labeled "Performance Expectations." Oh, okay. I thought maybe magic just happened or something. If you look up at the screen for just one moment, you'll see the color coding that I was referring to. And I'll talk about that. If you want to look at the documents, I'll point those out to you. In this slide, you can see the interwoven nature of the performance expectations. The blue being... Sorry. The blue being the science and engineering practices, the green being the cross-cutting concepts, and the orange, although it doesn't look too orange here, being the disciplinary core ideas, or the content, as we would commonly refer to it. Each one of these standards, teachers have to work with in order for their students to be able to perform this. And it will be assessed on our new NGSS field test that one of our students, student reps, referred to earlier. So you can also see the progression of the standard over time. If you look, in grade 3, students are being asked to analyze and interpret data, okay? Or to provide evidence. In grade 7, which is that MS means middle school, they're being asked to use a model. That's a little higher expectation. And then in high school, they're being asked to make and defend a claim. So although the topic is heredity in each area, as we rise through the grades, the expectation level and the complexity level of these standards increases.
So now, we're going to discuss a little bit about how these practices that we were just referring to are integrated into the other disciplines. So when you look at the skills and practices in each of these content areas, the Common Core Mathematics, the Common Core English Language Arts, and the next-generation science standards, you can see the integration or the intersection of these practices in all three areas. For example, in the gray area there, you'll see an example of constructing a viable argument, using evidence to support their... and using evidence to support their claims. We also very strongly that asking questions and defining problems is another common experience that all students will have in all these different content areas. Additionally, as referenced before, the inquiry skills and social studies are found in the next-generation science standards. So I just want to draw your attention to the center white circle there that says "Inquiry Arc." You'll see that it references developing questions and planning inquiries, gathering and evaluating evidence, and communicating conclusions. And again, referencing the library media curriculum that you had just seen recently. These skills are integrated throughout all content areas, and so students are really immersed in the inquiry and information skills, thinking critically and creatively, communicating and collaborating, independent reading, obviously, and technology that's integrated throughout. Again, these things are overlapped with the new curricular documents that we're bringing forward tonight. So now, we'd like to take a closer look at the actual standards themselves.
Hello, I'm Amy Frank-Aleetti. I'm a teacher at Stratfield Elementary School. I teach 2nd grade. This slide shows you some of the possible elementary phenomena. These are everyday events that we want students to be excited about, which can be as simple as the annual growth of flowers or plants, the effects of cold weather on a vehicle, or how the sun impacts a puddle through evaporation. Note that phenomena are both big or small observable events. One example of phenomena that we use in 2nd grade when studying properties of matter is when we combine salt and water in one container, sand and water in another. After stirring both mixtures, the contents are poured through a paper towel into another container. After viewing a phenomena, students then discuss their observations and generate questions about the phenomena. We want our students to observe and question what is happening around them to stimulate learning, like why, when I put a pencil on a desk, it stays there, or why a ball rolls down a ramp. Science answers questions about phenomena. You can see two examples of phenomena here. We'll try them with you. The first one is a tanker car that was cleaned the night before this video was taken. Now that you've just watched the video, think about what you observed, and then think about what questions you now have. In a classroom, as students generate questions, the teacher is thinking about the science concepts that are embedded in the standards. The second clip we will show you is one of our Fairfield-Ludlow teachers, Lisa Tinucci, demonstrating a phenomena for her students at the beginning of a unit of study. She is dropping ice cubes into beakers. Once again, think about what you observed, and what questions do you now have based on those observations. After observing phenomena, just like you did, the students would discuss their observations and then generate questions about what they saw. This becomes the driving force to their learning. Throughout this process, teachers are careful not to draw conclusions until evidence is
So what's the difference between science and engineering? Scientists ask what happened and why in the natural world. They try to explain phenomena like the ones you just saw. Here you see some of our student scientists collecting samples and using digital microscopes to identify plankton they collected at the Mill River. Here are some additional examples of our student scientists investigating phenomena. In this case, middle school students on the right, looking at pulley systems and explaining how the mass attached affects the system. The elementary students on the left are working at the birdcraft museum to gather information about habitats. And the pre-kindergarten student in the center is looking for fossils.
My name is Ryan Kelly. I'm an AP Biology teacher and Human Anatomy teacher at Fairfield-Ludlow High School. And I was just going to speak for a minute about the technology piece. I was really lucky, at the start of 2nd semester, to be issued a class set of Chromebooks. I got a set of 24 Chromebooks for my classroom. And as teachers, we're often hear that we need to teach our students 21st century skills, so things like creating, collaborating, asking questions, and of course, using technology. And so I feel having the technology in my room has really made it a lot easier for me to accomplish that. We also, as teachers, often hear the phrase, you know, "Don't be a sage on the stage." In other words, don't just stand up there and lecture and deliver content, be more of a guide on the side. And before I had the Chromebooks in my room, sometimes that was hard advice to follow, because, you know, I was the sole source of expertise in the room. But now with the Chromebooks, I can much more feel like I am a guide on the side, because they have full access to the internet and all the resources and all the expertise that is out there. I also feel like I'm using significantly less resources. I'm using significantly less paper. I'm spending significantly less time at the photocopier. The materials I am using are in full color. They can be animated. They can be simulations. There's just a tremendous amount I can do with the technology. I brought an example just for you to see. This is the example of the Chromebooks I have in my room. I think the size is great. It doesn't take up their full desk. They can still have their notebook next to them. They can take notes and use the technology at the same time. It's been very reliable. All the students are able to access the Wi-Fi in the room consistently. The battery life has been very good. I only have to charge it, I find, like every three days. So it's been a very nice, reliable machine for use in my classroom. So I guess in closing, I just really want to thank the Fairfield community, the Board of Education, you know, for providing the funds and initiative to increase the amount of technology in our classrooms. I want to thank my administrators, especially Greg Hatze, Patrice Fajella, the folks in the IT department I've been working with, Nancy Burns, Karen King. And I'm really excited by the prospect of all the science classrooms getting Chromebooks next year. And I feel like in the last couple of months, I'm only starting to scratch the surface of the tech. So, thank you.
So now, we're going to talk a little bit about engineering. So the engineers also ask questions. They use the answers that scientists find to help create new innovations. They use ideas and apply them to solving human problems. Like scientists, engineers ask questions, however, they ask questions about the problems and how to define the problems, and then how to test solutions. So, science and engineering really go hand in hand. We're very excited about this at the elementary level. This is going to be a very new experience for all of our elementary teachers as we integrate this. And again, as Ms. Fajella mentioned just a moment ago, the STEAM component that's at will help to support this initiative as well.
So firstly, don't panica with all the words on the slide. Many of you are familiar with the laboratory experiences you had throughout your schooling. The next-generation science standards require that students go beyond the traditional lab. Here you see a middle school heredity task. While there's quite a bit of wording on this slide, it's up to the teacher to chunk this information for his or her students. And that would include students who might struggle with this, some of our students with special needs, some of our English language learners, as well as our students, our other students in the class. We will point out the three dimensions in this task, and the increased level of rigor our new curriculum will include. So could you fly for me? Thank you. As you can see, students are asked to apply the scientific information and skill they have acquired to explain a phenomena, in this case, antibiotic resistance. And with that, I'm going to introduce Jen Raciopo, who actually, at the high school level, is also working on an NGSS unit on antibiotic resistance.
My name is Jen. My name's Jen Raciopo. I teach science at Fairfield Ward. Forgive me for reading this. I didn't want to miss anything. So after 21 years of teaching science of all levels, I've jumped into NGSS head-on in my honors biology and elective courses. Although I still feel I have a lot to learn, I feel I can already see the benefits. I anticipated students being able to apply what they learn in new situations. I anticipated them to be able to... I expected them to be able to create and design solutions to challenging questions. Questions... to challenging questions, questions that don't have solvable answers necessarily on the Internet. Problems they must solve in a new and novel way. Their assessments are multi-layered and more complicated than they've been in the past, yet their performance in varied grades and levels have exceeded my expectations. So my averages on my common things are actually better in many cases. My students no longer follow directions from a cookbook experiment like they used to. I show them a phenomenon of a real-world experience, and they're now asking questions and designing experiments that will best answer their questions that they generate. They're completing CERs, which is a nice new acronym for you, which includes claims, evidence, and reasoning. These are the same type of CERs that are often used in social studies and English classes. My biology honors students were recently presented with a real-life little girl named Addie that became very sick very quickly. It's a frontline video on her story. It doesn't tell them the answer. The students were then asked to make a claim, an explanation, as to why they thought she got sick so quickly. They were then, they then followed up with their experiments and using math models. They were able to provide evidence and develop a scientific explanation that included scientific vocabulary that was new to them to provide an answer to their original problem of why Addie got sick so quickly. In oceanography, an upper-level course that's very heterogeneous, students studied our Fairfield coastline and the effects of Hurricane Sandy and climate change. They're currently engineering an actual solution to prevent coastal erosion for future climate change events in Fairfield. What has been most surprising to me doing these next-gen standards and the strategies that come along with it is my students are asking questions they've never asked me before, questions I truly don't know the answers to. What makes this even more exciting is their desire to answer the question. Students are no longer accepting of my standard "I don't know" response. They're seeking the answers and they want them. They're using the technology they have in the classroom to answer these questions beyond my expectations and knowledge. I'm talking college-level stuff that I've never seen. Then they take their new learning and they apply it to what we're actually doing to create a deeper understanding of the concepts they're learning in class. In my five months of NGSS implementation, I have learned more from my students than I have in the past 18 years. So I've been very impressed by the whole situation.
So for this portion of the presentation, I just wanted to summarize a little bit about the differences between the science and engineering, and also look at the commonalities. In science, we're looking at identifying phenomena and asking questions about the phenomena. Students have opportunities to investigate that phenomena, gather observable data, analyze it, and then make some, draw some conclusions based on that evidence. In engineering, students are identifying human needs. Again, they're asking questions, but they're asking questions to define problems. They're designing those solutions, testing the solutions, redesigning the solutions, and retesting to solve, to solve human problems or human needs.
Now, I'd like to walk you through the anatomy of the science documents. Each document is set up in the same way, so you can choose to look at a document that you have in front of you, although we have screenshots of them up here. In the introductory pages of the document, you will find the enduring understandings, the most important takeaways from the course or grade level. Then you will see the course essential questions, followed by the course or semester at a glance, which shows the units and their essential questions. So this basically just gives you an overview of what are we going to be working on in this particular course. Next, we'll take a look at an individual unit, and you can see there's a heredity theme here through the whole presentation. So this is the heredity unit in the biology document at the high school level. You'll see the title of the unit, and then there's a unit overview. It gives a short summary of the big ideas. The unit performance expectations, those are the things in the middle box. Those are the things that the teachers are responsible to make sure their students are able to do by the end of the unit. And the unit essential questions are also included. In addition to the performance expectations that weave all three dimensions of the standards together, the cross-cutting concepts, disciplinary core ideas, and science and engineering practices are listed out separately for clarification. That's so if a teacher needs to drill down a little further as to exactly what it is that students need to be able to do, this gives them a little bit more explanation. And then lastly, we show the links to the Connecticut Core Standards in ELA and in Very excited about this slide. One of the goals of the revision of our high school program was to offer more choice to our high school students while still providing a rich and well-rounded program. Students are better able to select courses that fit with their passion and their aspirations beyond high school. You will notice that beginning next year, all grade nine students will be entering high school in biology. The possibilities after that are much greater than in our current system. We are very proud of the hard work and professional discussions the teachers went through to arrive at this rigorous but flexible high school program. We have two brand-new courses being proposed, the Chemistry of Medicine and the Chemistry of Nutrition. In addition, our former Earth Science course has been broken up into four different semester courses. Now, just for clarification, the L that you see in some places stands for Life Science, the E stands for Earth and Space Science, and the P stands for Physical Science. Any course with an asterisk is a semester course as opposed to a year-long course. And I am happy to report that based on our preliminary numbers, and they are preliminary, all of these courses are well-subscribed. So now, I'm going to put my STEAM hat on. The integration of several fields has created STEAM, science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics. I am very excited to talk to you about a new opportunity for our students in grades three, four, and five next year. In addition to the grades three, four, and five science curriculum, we are very excited to have the opportunity to add an additional STEAM component to those grade levels next year. The intention of the program is to augment the science curriculum in a fun and engaging way by allowing students to have an additional opportunity to act as scientists and engineers. This program will bring the science to life while incorporating the engineering and technology standards that are part of our new standards. The unit titles are in line with the new elementary units, with the exception of one exciting addition. All students in grades three, four, and five will have a STEAM unit on coding. This will be in addition to the instruction they receive as part of the library media curriculum, and we have coordinated with those educators to ensure that we can take students even further than they go now. While many of us are familiar with STEM, the A, arts, can sometimes raise questions. We need to broaden our definition of art to include creativity, physical design, functionality, and aesthetics. Here you can see an example of how the A fits in. I will refer you back to the two most recent presentations you've heard. In the Technology Education update, you heard about students working on architecture. And in the Library Media update, Wixie drawings were discussed. These are both examples of the A in STEAM. In these photos, the student work on the left shows the front and back of a journal page. Students used LED lights, see that little white dot on the far left? That's the LED, to illuminate their journals in the electric circuits unit in grade four. They were learning about open and closed circuits, which you can see on the back page. The gold circle is the battery, and the tape is the wire. The students on the right are designing a cargo boat to prevent containers from sliding in rough seas and damaging the goods inside. They need to work as teams and capitalize on each other's knowledge and strengths, just as engineers do every day.
So we're going to now discuss a little bit about how we plan to evaluate the newly-implemented curriculum, as well as the next steps. So we'll use multiple measures to evaluate the success of the curriculum. Here, you can see list, you can see them listed here. We'll be analyzing student work as we move through the progress, process. The performance assessments will provide us with some data. Teacher feedback is very important as we move through the process, and I'm sure it will evolve as our students evolve too. Observations in the classroom, as well as the state assessment data. Just as a note, and I'm just going to state it one more time, this year, we are doing the field test of the next-generation science standards instead of the Connecticut Mastery Tests in grades five, eight, and 10, actually, grade 11. And this is occurring across the state of Connecticut this year. However, that data will not be reported back to the schools, so we will not be receiving any information on it this year. It is a transition year moving from the CMT to the next-generation science standard. So again, we have multiple points of information to gather to look at the implementation and how successful we'll be. So some of the next steps, with the Board of Education's approval of these documents, we'll be working on the implementation guides for grades nine through 12, as well as the grades three through five River Lab. We are still maintaining River Lab. We just need to update it and align it with the next-generation science standards, as well as the STEAM for grades three, four, and five. That work, we plan on, we've already begun some of that, looking, exploring some of that work already, but plan to do that this summer. And we'll also, the common assessments will be forthcoming. We've also done considerable amount of professional development, as was noted earlier in this presentation, an inquiry. However, there's still a lot more work to be done that will continue throughout the implementation of these new standards. Teachers will continue to work collaboratively and plan in small groups, as well as a wider department. And we also plan on bringing more content, information, and professional development down to our elementary folks as well over the next couple of years. What you're looking at here is really just a snapshot of the timeline, just to give you a sense of the rollout of the curriculum. So just one note, River Lab you see is up there twice, summer writing, this summer and next summer. That program has been with us for over 50 years. It is not something that changes in two weeks during the summer. We do anticipate a significant amount of work, but are very excited about the direction that it will take.
One of my favorite scientists, Neil deGrasse Tyson, said the following about how students learn to be scientists. While we aren't planning on breaking things, unless that's the task, I know you can all relate to this if you think back to your own childhood, that natural curiosity about how and why things work. We plan to capitalize on that and build on it to create future scientists and engineers.
So we would like to extend our sincere thanks to all those teachers, administrators, and community members who worked so hard on this curriculum. It is through their dedication and passion for their students and through their subject matter that we are able to bring them, bring you this program tonight. There are so many, we will not read the list, but we just have provided you, as you can see, the groups of participants that took part. We also want to acknowledge the teachers, again, who are here this evening for supporting this, and we want to thank you for this opportunity to present you with the new science curriculum. Thank you very much.
You were thanked at the beginning, but let me thank you at the end of your presentation. It was a thorough presentation, and I very much appreciate the work that went into it. I see some people went back to the audience rather than...
It's called retreat.
...take questions, but, but you're welcome to ask for a lifeline if a question comes to you and you want to drop on people. Mrs. Gerber, you have a question?
Do. First of all, thank you very much for the presentation. I'm not particularly much of a science person, so, but going through all of this, it's very easy to kind of go through and see where, where things are going. One question I had is, would we be able to get a copy of the PowerPoint presentation? Just because, you know, there were just some things I'd like to kind of go back over and look at again, and it was kind of going quickly, so if we could get copies of that, that would be really great.
We can absolutely provide that. It'll also be posted on the district's website.
Perfect.
But we can get you hard copies if that's helpful.
Okay, thank you. That would be great. Then, one thing you mentioned was that there were, after the parent-teacher focus groups, you made some revisions. Was there anything specific kind of that came out of those that, any, what the revisions were, I guess, if there any detail to that, just?
I mean, I can speak to the secondary, and then if Walter has something to add, I'll let him do that.
Okay.
The community focus groups, we had quite a few science people in those focus groups, which was really great because they, you know, they work in the real world in this, in this field every day. They asked us some questions that caused us to go back and clarify, just, you know, some of the, some of the statements in the documents. They also made some suggestions that we will put into our implementation guides about how, you know, how we will get this information across to students. We met with the River Lab folks, who gave us some really good feedback and helped us to figure out, you know, where best to place River Lab in each of the grades. It will remain in middle school as well, and I'm working on that portion. Walter's working on the elementary portion of that. And the teachers gave us a phenomenal amount of, actually, actually, the teachers wrote these. And, you know, I think that's critically important because they're the ones who have to actually deliver this. You know, they're, they're the ones on the ground with the students. And so, the reason that they deserve a tremendous amount of credit and a huge thank you is that they put in the time and effort to write these in a way that they felt would best meet the needs of all of their students. And, you know, we consulted with special educators. We consulted with library media specialists. We involved a lot of people in this dialogue, so, you know, there was, there was a lot of back and forth revision that went on in that regard. And, you know, I'm, you know, I'll, I say this publicly a lot, but I'll say it here because it's on TV, so then everybody gets to, everybody gets to hear it. I, I have worked in, in four other school districts in a capacity similar to this, and I have never worked with a finer group of science educators than the people I work with here. They're just amazing.
I think he was here, Reigman, is going to...
I just, from the elementary level, I just want to echo a lot of what Patrice had just said. It was, the feedback, particularly from parents, was very helpful around clarity of language. And there were some question, they were very knowledgeable about NGSS, which I was very pleased to hear because the, it was critical feedback, which was helpful. To give you an example, the NGSS has bundled the standards as well as, in either thematically or topically, and school districts are looking at both ways, and that helped us to reflect on what do we want to do here in Fairfield, and what, what best meets the needs for our students. To be honest, at the elementary level, it's kind of a blend, but we do think of it more thematically than, than topically. So that's just an example of some of those questions. That dialogue is very helpful. And again, the teacher authors are immersed in the documents, and when it was shared with teachers across the districts, you're getting perspective from many teachers interpreting the documents. Their feedback is helpful because it's, it helps to meet the needs of students across the entire town and think about all of the constituents and the students that we have. So that, again, the feedback groups, the focus groups are very helpful for us.
And then just one other question, and I apologize if this was mentioned at some other point. This is regarding the high school, the change to having the biology freshman year. And so, that's going to be implemented in the 18, 19 school year.
That's correct. Next fall.
So... So, what happens to the students who are freshmen this year who took earth science? Will they be able to take bio next year?
Yes.
For one year?
We're gonna have a bubble of students.
Bio is gonna be freshmen and sophomore.
We're gonna have a bubble of bio, yes.
Got it.
We're gonna have a bubble of biology students, and we've planned for this as far as, you know, teacher certification and resources and all of that, because, you know, that's been our plan from the beginning. So, so the students who are currently in earth science will move forward to biology just as they would have in the prior system, and then all of our incoming ninth graders will be taking biology as well.
Right. And you have enough bio teachers?
We do.
To do that?
Yeah. We're, we, we have, we're very fortunate in this district. We have quite a number of people who have multiple areas of certification in science. Science is one of those things where you're not just certified in science, you're certified in biology, or chemistry, or physics, or earth science. We have quite a number of people who have many, many certifications, and so we're able to swing those people. If you're a baseball fan, like I am, you know, they're like the utility player, they can play in multiple places. And so for next year, we'll be swinging some of those people to pick up some of that extra biology, and then the following year, they'll, they'll swing back.
Got it. Okay, thank you very much.
Other questions? Ms. Peterson.
Again, thank you for the presentation, it's very, it's very informative, and, and as, as somebody who's a big fan of getting more critical science thought into all of our students, I like that, that the standards have all that kind of cross-cutting concepts broadly applicable, I think that's great. I have a couple of questions, some, some are small, some are somewhat larger. I guess one of the, one of the things that I noticed primarily was it seems that there's a larger emphasis on, on the hands-on, pretty much at every level. And I was wondering, kind of, how is that going to impact the proportion of, you know, the kind of guide on the side versus the actual lab work? You know, which obviously, I think in elementary, it's a lot of hands-on blocks and, and stuff, but it, it's more regimented in some ways at the high school level, I was just kind of curious how that balance was gonna work out.
I want to make sure that I understand your question before I answer the wrong question. So as I understand it, what you're, what you're asking is, you know, with the emphasis on hands-on, when are we going to have the opportunity to cover the content in addition to doing that hands-on stuff?
That's a more elegant way to answer my question.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood it properly.
No, no, thank you.
And, the way that these new standards are designed, the content is embedded in the hands-on experiences that students are doing. So it's not a one or the other, we're doing both at the same time. And so, you know, it's, the way that the teacher structures the lesson, or the unit, is very deliberate so that the students will cover the content without the teacher standing in front of them every single day. Now that's not to say there won't be direct instruction, there's still a need for direct instruction. You know, students are going to need background information and all of that, but they will be doing a lot of the questioning and designing of the experiments that are going to answer the questions that lead them to that content, and the teachers are very skilled at making sure that they guide them in the right direction.
And that's, that kind of feeds into another question that I had about the, about the, that exact issue, rather than working out of kind of this received wisdom of, this is the, this is the experimental structure. I assume that at almost every level, the teacher is gonna function kind of as a, as a funnel, and, you know, be able to say, if someone comes up with a, an idea that, you know, may not ultimately illustrate that the point that the lesson's trying to make, say, "Well, hey, maybe we can look at something else." But, I, so I, I take it that that's your, you would, you would agree, that's, it's a guide, right?
Yes. So, so, you know, as a teacher, you want to give your students choice and freedom, but it's limited choice and freedom. So, you know, you don't want someone going off in a complete, you know, wrong direction. And as I said, you know, our teachers are very skilled at making sure that that doesn't happen. We've provided them with, you know, professional development, and you heard a little bit about that, but we, you know, we have to continue that. That's essential in order for this to really be 100% successful.
Well, I imagine that kind of frontline experience is also extremely useful. I mean, there's not, there's no better trainer than actually fielding, you know, 12 different experimental design concepts.
Right. Well, it's kind of like, I liken it to learning to drive. You know, you watch someone drive your whole life, and then you get behind the wheel, and all of a sudden it doesn't look so easy. At least it didn't for me. So, you know, we, we are supporting the teachers, and it will be, you know, kind of a learn-as-you-go. The great news about this group is that they are an extremely collaborative group, and we actually, Dr. Jones, Mr. Cummings, and myself met with all the high school teachers a couple months back to talk to them about what they felt their needs were, and, you know, we, what came through loud and clear was the need for them to have collaborative planning time, and so we are actually putting that into their daily schedules next year to ensure that they're gonna have the time they need to do that.
Just one, one kind of informational question about the grade three to five coding that you're implementing. Is that, is that Scratch or is it something? It feels like at a lot of levels, we're doing Scratch and...
Well, we're currently using code.org, which is a website, first of all, it's been, you know, vetted and they've signed the privacy policy with Connecticut, so, you know, we have to be careful about, you know, which programs we choose to use to make sure that they're compliant with that. But the library media specialists are using it, and so, you know, our feeling, or at least my feeling is right now, we're gonna stick with that simply because we don't want students working on two different platforms at the same time at that age level. So, they, they learn the skills, you know, it builds obviously over time. I was in an eighth grade classroom today where in their technology class, they were actually learning how to allow, create a game, and how to register the score. In other words, what's the code you put in so that when someone answers correctly, the score goes up by one. And, you know, some of the kids were, I mean, I was, I have to tell you, I was amazed, I was totally out of my element, and, you know, they were way beyond my skill set when it came to that kind of thing. But, so we're gonna stick with, we're gonna stick with what's currently being used in the district and just try to add on to it.
Thanks very much.
Other questions? Mrs. Maxine Connolly.
Okay. Again, thank you so much for the presentation. I have to start with a, what happened to the tanker?
Oh. What do you think happened?
I don't know. I don't believe I have enough data from which to make a claim.
I can hear the science teachers behind me right now laughing at my question, right? So what happened with the tanker was that, that, that occurred, yeah, that occurred in Canada in the wintertime. They steam cleaned the tanker the night before, so it was warm. And then overnight, what happens in Canada in the wintertime?
Or the summer.
Well, okay, depending on what part of Canada you're from, that's true. It, you know, the analogy is you, you go into a novelty store in the middle of January when it's zero degrees outside, and you buy a balloon, and then you walk outside, what happens? So it's, it's, it's a, it's a gas law situation where as the temperature goes down, the pressure goes down, and the tanker just implodes.
You should have as, as part of the presentation what some of the student guesses were, because they, they'll be fearless about putting...
I'll tell you some of the student guesses about the, the other...
The ice cubes?
Yes, if you'd like to know.
Sure.
But I'd like to hear some, one guess first.
One of them has salt in it?
See, that's a very typical student guess, but if you ever, if you put an ice cube in water with salt, what happens to it?
It'd actually float more.
It still floats.
I think it's water.
Okay, so, so you're, you're the ringer. I, you know, I was gonna have a conversation with Trish Pitco to tell her not to give the answer away when she was, if she was here. No, one of, one of those liquids is isopropyl alcohol, and so it's a density problem. Ice is denser than isopropyl alcohol, but less dense than water, and so, you know. But the kids usually go for, "You doctored the ice cube." That's, that's their go-to. "You did something to that ice cube, like it's fake, you know, it's a plastic ice cube with a weight in it," like they come up with all kinds of stuff. The great news about that is that they are really thinking about what is happening, you know, like a real scientist would. Like, "I see something that doesn't make sense to me, and I need to find an answer for that." So, so now you can't give the secrets away because we might use those...
I just had to know about the tanker. So, however, that's actually a perfect segue to my next question, which is about time, because obviously that process just here in microcosm, that is gonna take a tremendous amount of time. So, has there been a reduction of content in order to allow that process to take place? And separately with that is the issue of the elementary schools, because I know there's been, and I, I can't quote the exact numbers, but I know that between social studies and science, they've only had a certain amount of time allocated, and it's, the school day isn't getting longer, so I was wondering, you know, for both of these, how is this working?
That's right. Actually, what is very, excuse me, what is very exciting about bringing forward the new science curriculum is there will be a content, we'll be able to converge content areas. So for example, we are already purchasing nonfiction resources for literacy, so as they're teaching reading and nonfiction, they can teach nonfiction, use resources that support the social studies unit, or that support the science unit, so that you can integrate the content areas a little bit more. And when you start talking about students being able to identify questions and using evidence, again, that's sort of a theme that goes through it. As far as the content specifically, the, the plan forward is moving with six-week units, both in the social studies and in the science, alternating as we go through the course of the year, to address those content areas. So they will be mapped out. That was part of the task that the teachers were given, or the parameters, I should say, in designing these units, just to think about, that's the amount of time that you have for these units, how are we going to structure this? The real work is the interpretation of that as we develop the implementation guides that supports the teacher's implementation.
And so the teachers have, especially in the elementary schools, obviously, will have some freedom to make suggestions, because I know right now we try to make it clear that, you know, every grade and across all the schools are following a similar schedule, that there will, you're guaranteed a certain amount of time allocated to math, or to reading, or to science, et cetera. Is there freedom if they say, "Well, we would like to move things," or at all? I mean, obviously it'd be part of a district-wide conversation, but...
Right. The, the implementation guides really are guides to help support the teacher in the implementation. It provides them with what are the big ideas in this unit that we want kids to know and to be able to do. And as you know, students come in with, with varying degrees of understanding, so they may already have some background knowledge, that teachers can skip over certain portions and move on. Other times, they may have a group of students where they need to, to continue and further build the foundational understandings. That goes on all the time in all content areas. So there is that flexibility that teachers have in that implementation. So a lot of that is gonna be individual teacher planning, but as far as the implementation guides, that's a, to help support and, and structure, what are the big ideas we want students to take away from this unit? What do we expect as far as performance expectations? And so there's some flexibility in how we get there, but it's, those expectations need to be very clear in those documents.
And so what about in the high school, then, where you don't have a...
Did you notice I moved the microphone right over?
Yeah, I was just, just checking. So where obviously you don't, you, the scientist, the science bio teacher is not gonna be able to, you know, say to the ELA teacher, "I need this read in your class."
Oh, we're not?
Well...
I'm just joking.
Yeah.
What, what actually has happened with these new standards is they, they are focused on concepts rather than what I, I don't mean this in a negative way, but rather than minutia. So for instance, if you take a topic like mitosis, which is cell division, for the hundred years that I've been in education, we have taught students every individual phase and the name of the phase and what it looks like. Do you all remember this from biology class? Okay. So how many of you could name them all in order? It's good that none of you raised your hand, because it would have ruined my point. And, so, so what these new standards have done is, students still need to understand cell division, they need to understand mitosis, but they don't need to memorize the name of every phase. So they are, we're looking at the concept in a context rather than just, okay, today we're doing mitosis, and tomorrow we're doing meiosis, and the next day we're doing, you know, I don't know, genetic mutations in DNA, you know, following all of these, you know, little bitty memorization kinds of tasks. And the beauty in that is that it does give the teacher some freedom and flexibility if they have a, it's, it's not to say the teachers aren't allowed to go into that level of depth, but the curriculum, as you know, is kind of the minimum standard, right? Teachers can always go beyond it, they just can't choose to not do something that's in the curriculum. The focus of NGSS is really for students to become better critical thinkers and problem solvers, and so a lot of that memorization type of stuff has come out. So another, a middle school example, for instance. In middle school, on the old CMT, students were expected to memorize the first 20 elements of the periodic table. Why?
Because it's great for cocktail parties.
Okay. You know, it, it, no English teacher sends a child...
Later in life.
Well, no English teacher that I know of in middle school sends a child home to memorize the first three pages of the dictionary. And that's pretty much what memorizing the first 20 elements of the periodic table is. So it's more important that they understand how to use it, and that's the focus of these new standards. So as far as the time factor, you know, these curricula are designed to be able to be taught in the time that's given, but we are gonna be doing things differently. And so, you know, we're gonna take some of that memorization piece out, because in all truthfulness, every piece of research you could read, and I know you're well aware of this, you know, if you gave a child the same final exam in September that they took in June, they remember approximately 5% of the factual, you know, minutia that you taught them. It's, it's the big ideas, it's the connections they make, it's the skills that they develop that are really important.
Which is, once again, a perfect segue to the next point, that while I'm, I'm definitely familiar with that idea of the June versus the September administration of an exam, if you're the honors bio teacher, and then you've got the AP bio teacher, you know, what I'm always curious about is that underlying foundational content, you know, almost as a list, that that AP bio teacher can count on, yes, you may have addressed these enduring understandings and essential questions, but I know you know mitosis. I mean, I'm not gonna try to...
Tila phase, Xanifase, okay, yeah, I'll name them.
That there would be...
I'll mix them up and ask you to order them.
Yeah. That there be, though, those certain basic factual elements that while absolutely there may need to be review, you know, that there, there is that cycle to it, but that there is an absolute expectation that you would be familiar with this term, know how it applies, might need a quick review, but you're ready to take it to that next level. Is that spelled out somewhere?
It is, it is spelled out in the implementation guides.
Okay.
It's also found, I mentioned it in the presentation very briefly, so it's also found in the fact that the AP practices are nearly identical to the NGSS practices. And so we've aligned, you know, we've aligned our content to ensure that our students who are going to go on to AP, as a result of our, you know, our choice to open that up more for students, to make sure that they're gonna be prepared. So they will be familiar, like I said, there's still a place for direct instruction, they're still gonna have to know certain vocabulary terms and all of those things, but we're, you know, it's not gonna be identical to what we do now.
No, I mean, those sound like very reasonable adjustments, so that's, those were great examples. I guess one other question I'll ask right now, and I'll decide if I want to ask the other ones. The tests themselves, in terms of what's gonna be different for our teachers who, this field test that of course bothers me to a degree, that we're getting used as guinea pigs, and I know the state needs the data, but that we get absolutely no feedback, no sample questions, I'm sure any released material is at a bare minimum, that puts us obviously in a tough position. I don't know if we're allowed to speak with the students afterward to pick their brains for what they can remember from the test, but...
We're not allowed to if they find out about it.
Yeah, I didn't think so, but, what, how do you...
We don't do that.
How do you see us adjusting, I mean, fifth grade, eighth grade, and I know specifically with the 11th grade science, there are the four science fields, three years to cover them in, and most students will not be doubling up on science. So, I mean, those are kind of two separate issues of fifth grade, eighth grade, and then that 11th grade test, 11th again specifically with the issue of the four sciences.
Do you want to speak to the fifth grade?
Sure. In the fifth grade, and there are a few sample questions on, online right now that we're able to use... that we're able to use just to give us a sense of what the questions are like. And they really are, and this is the same thing with the Common Core or the Smarter Balance assessments for, for math and language arts. They're really focused more on the critical thinking, providing students with information and having them think about their responses rather than in fact recall. It does require some base knowledge, for example, about the content itself in order to apply it. But there is also information and evidence in the text that they provide or in the data that they provide that students can reason through some of the problems too. So, that at the elementary level, that it is, at, at this point, and again, I haven't seen the assessments other than the sample questions that they provided, but that seems to be the direction that they're going in. And also, I've just went recently to a presentation about the NGSS and what they're planning on doing in terms of the assessments. They state is planning on releasing a significant number of items this coming fall that schools can then use to help understand, help students understand essentially what is, how this test is designed and what the test questions are going to be, what they'll look like.
And the fact that elementary, the fifth graders will be taking it in the spring of 2019 when we don't even have the new curriculum implemented till the following year.
Right. So, we, I anticipate that we'll be going through, actually, I know, we will be going through a transition. Our fifth graders will be taking this with probably the least amount of preparation just because they're in fifth grade already. And so, we will be developing transition implementation guides as we move through this process. I think we're at an advantage for a number of reasons. When I met with area districts, Fairfield is bringing their documents forward. A lot of districts have not done that yet. So, we are not alone in this, in where we are in our process. But that being said, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. And I'm not able to recall it.
I was going with you, so that, that's okay.
But if you restated the question, would that help?
The, the preparation for students in, in grade five. So, I think as we are going through this, that will be our baseline data. And we're going to look at how do our students perform? It'll give us, when we finally do get some information back, it'll give us guidance on where do we need to tweak our documents? How do we need to better adjust them as we move forward? That, including teacher feedback, is going to be extremely helpful as, as we move forward through this process.
I think Mrs. Jacobson wants to follow up on that line of question.
Just because it was on the same area. So, I just wanted to add a quick follow-up to Mrs. Maxen Canelli's question. The state's timeline for implementation on their website has the pilot test happening next year and 2020 being the full implementation. Do we have any information about why this was pushed up to this year?
Part of that is because the state, they've been really pushing forward or wanting to push forward, moving over to, migrating over to the Next Generation Science Standard Assessment. In, in part, the, the state adopted these in 2015. And so, we're trying to, to move everything forward. What they were trying to avoid was taking two high-stakes assessments simultaneously in the same year. We do have a transition year. They were, they had to apply to the feds to get permission not to take the CMT this year. The feds did give the state of Connecticut permission to do that. And so, that's why this year is a, you know, again, a year that doesn't count, so to speak, and why we don't get any feedback or data from it and why we're going to be moving forward with, with the implementation of the full test for next year.
Yes, I know that we have the waiver for this year. I was just wondering why they didn't do it next year along with their timeline that is actually still on their own websites. I'm not trying to make you answer for this date. I just think it gives us a year less time, right? And our students a less year time to, before they actually are being tested. And to that further point on that, their timeline also contemplated rolling these out in certain grades, giving them, in the grades that would be tested first, meaning certain grades in elementary, certain grades in middle, certain grade at high, so that they would have two years before they actually were taking the test. Was there a reason why we didn't do it that way rather than by level? Just curious why we didn't take that suggestion from them and did it kind of high school first and then lower? Just because they, it did seem to me that it contemplated two years of instruction prior to the testing, but, so just curious why we didn't go it that way.
Right. I just, we'll speak to the elementary level right now. The elementary teachers, again, are a single teacher in the classroom, teaching all content areas. We are currently rolling out the new social studies units. We are full into the, the whole SRBI process. There's a lot on their plates at the moment. Plus, as you can see, I hope with the presentation we gave you tonight, there's a lot of professional development and background information that we need to help support teachers before we just hand them, here's, implement the new science. So, these are works that are already, we're already trying to support as we're moving forward. As I mentioned, the nonfiction reading resources in our elementary classrooms to help support that, that connection, engage kids in thinking and asking questions. So, that work is already going on. It is an ongoing process, but that's where we are.
Just overload, a lot going on at that, I understand. Okay. Thank you so much. Sorry, Jen.
It's okay.
Mrs. Maxen, but Canelli, back to you.
And eighth and 12th, eighth and 11th grade.
So, I'm sorry, could you repeat your question? It's been a while.
Sure. So, just the idea that it's, well, too, I mean, obviously, eighth grade, there's the issue of the, and I haven't acquainted myself yet completely with how radically or not the middle school curriculum has been changed beyond what you just said in terms of the minutia. But certainly, high school, there's the situation of, and a test after three years on four-year, four topics.
Correct.
And so, how, what, what's in place for preparing students for that?
Well, we, first of all, we have options for students to take, you know, physical science, earth science, and life science if they choose to do so. We are choosing not to mandate that they take one of each because we want to give students the flexibility to follow a pathway that makes sense for them. However, you know, in thinking about the test, it's not unlike what we've been doing with CAPT all along. You know, CAPT was given in 10th grade. It was basically three sciences and you only had two years. So, what we ended up doing was weaving some of the, you know, for students who began in earth science, they had earth science and biology and then they took the test and they never had a physical science. So, we ended up weaving some of that physical science into their earlier courses. With this, it's going to be a little bit different. You know, again, I've only seen the four high school sample questions that the state has given us as practice for the students. And what they, what they look like is they, they give the students a scenario. So, they, you know, there's a, a little paragraph or something that describes either some kind of phenomena or an experiment that someone's done or whatever. And then students are asked, you know, four or five questions about that scenario. And it's set up such that they have to, they have to actually physically design and experiment to test, you know, whatever their, their guess is about what's happening. So, we will, you know, in the interim next year, we'll probably end up creating some review information that we'll provide to students in 11th grade because, you know, they haven't had any of this instruction. They're going to walk into 11th grade, have instruction, you know, in the new curriculum for one year and go take the test. So, we will, we will end up providing some, some preparation in other areas for them to utilize. As we roll this out and as we have students, you know, kind of go through the whole process, that will become less necessary. But, you know, the state only mandates two years of science. We have a three-year mandate, thankfully. But nobody mandates four years of science. And even if they did, they wouldn't give the test in 12th grade because they wouldn't get the results before the kids would leave us. So, you know, we're faced with the same sort of situation, you know, with some students in math who may not be, you know, who may be taking algebra as a freshman and may not get to the point where the SAT is in junior year. We're faced with the same sort of situation. So, we're, you know, the plan is to create some, some support materials for the 11th graders next year to make sure that they are as prepared as they can be. You know, we haven't quite worked out what that's going to look like yet.
Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Leeper.
This might be best question for Dr. Jones, but were we mandated to take the pilot this year or was it a district choice between pilot and CMT?
It was not a choice.
It was not a choice.
Every district, all 169 towns in Connecticut are taking the field test at grades five, eight, and 11.
So, has it been like reported to the state that the metadata they're going to get on the items? Because the pilot test isn't meant to inform the item bank, won't necessarily be particularly informative of, obviously, in preaching to the choir, you know this. If we haven't rolled out the new standards, has that, has this district reported that to the state? That this pilot will likely not inform the metadata for the item bank?
I have had that conversation with the state. How can I say this?
It's fallen on deaf ears.
They, they listened and said, "Thank you." And...
Trains rolling down the track?
Pretty much.
Okay. I just wanted to, I interject. I think I might have gone out of order if, but we were on.
You were called on next. So, do you have any other questions?
Sure. So, thank you for this presentation. I always get so excited to see the movement towards inquiry-based instruction. I think kids are so engaged in that way. And so, I was wondering, how many hours per week of science instruction do our elementary students receive currently?
Right. So, it's about 45 minutes a day, five days or, well, we're on a six-day cycle, but it is...
I'm so happy to hear that. I had been under the impression that elementary students didn't have science every day and that I was like really out of touch thinking that science, that our elementary school students did get science every day.
Right. So, that caveat, I'm going to say right now, and this is something that as we're moving forward, we're looking to standardize this as we move forward across the district. There is some discrepancy across the district right now with our current program. And there's also a little discrepancy between what is taught when. Teachers in the past have had a choice as to which unit they would teach first. There has been some flexibility around that. Given the content standards and the, and the raised rigor in all of them, we're really examining that and providing teachers with pacing guides on, to help support how to implement and integrate, particularly when we're thinking about aligning, when we're doing a nonfiction unit in language arts. How does that support the social studies? How might that support the? And so, it's helpful to have all those pieces lined up and the same thing with math units and that kind of thing. So, those are the questions that we are putting on the table as we start to move forward and to think about how best to capitalize on the instructional minutes that we have or the limited instructional minutes that we have with kids.
I think that's awesome. And then also, I think in the elementary school, the idea that you're pushing engineering is really exciting. And I was wondering if you gave any thought into ways to particularly engage girls in the engineering components. And I know it might just happen organically because previously, kids weren't traditionally introduced to engineering at that age. But I was wondering if that is something you guys gave any thought to and kind of help, you know, with the gender disparity in engineering later in life?
I'm married to an engineer, so, so I have a little resource. But we, we are going to be writing the, the STEAM units this summer. That is something that we've talked about, you know, making sure that we have units that engage all learners, you know, whether they're, you know, high-performing, struggling learners, girls, boys, you know, whatever, however you want to slice and dice the, the groups of, of students. One of the key facts that we've spoken about, and some of the folks who helped with writing those frameworks are here tonight, some of the library media specialists and the math-science teachers, is that we, we do want to give kids choice in, you know, in what it is that they're working on. So, within the unit, you know, which will be tied to their science unit, we want to be able to give them some choice. And I think that, you know, when you give a student choice, they tend to be more engaged than if you give them a specific task. So, we're going to present them with, you know, not, you know, every possible opportunity under the sun, but an array of possibilities and they can choose from that array of possibilities what problem they want to work on to try to solve. There will need to be some pre-instruction done, you know, especially, well, first, in the first year in all three grades, about, you know, what, what this is because students haven't had this in their classroom setting before. And so, we're going to use some instruction in the QFT protocol, which I think you've heard about before and things like that. And so, there'll be some kind of introductory things going on. And then we won't have to do that with next year's fourth and fifth graders because they will have, you know, they will have gone through it once. We'll only have to do it with the third graders each year from, from then on. But I do think it's exciting. And, you know, anybody who's had children that age and has watched them, you know, take things apart to see how they work, knows that, you know, that's, that's fascinating for kids in that age group and their, their natural curiosity really drives it, so.
I have two little boys, almost two and almost four. So, the idea of breaking things to figure out how they work is...
So, you like that Neil deGrasse Tyson quote about breaking things?
Yes, it's perfect. Can I ask one last question? I really love the idea of presenting students with phenomena or problems that don't have a real solution necessarily. We, as a board this year, have heard a lot about grading across the district. And so, I was curious, when students are presented with a phenomenon or a challenge like that, that might not have a specific set solution, what will the grading be like? Is it the CER that you guys mentioned? Or is there a rubric or?
It'll depend on, on what the task is that students are doing. And so, you know, it may be a rubric that students are given ahead of time where their solution has to meet certain criteria. And that will probably be the most likely way that we assess those things because that allows for variety in a, in a, you know, a student response. And, you know, in the real world of science and engineering, there isn't one right way to fix a problem. There isn't one right answer. So, there are many answers. And, you know, the, the funniest part about this is that some students are very uncomfortable with there being more than one right answer. So, that's something that we have to work with them on. Is, is that it's okay if you and your neighbor have different answers. They can both be right. And so, that's, you know, that's part of the work that we have to do with students is to build that culture about, you know, understanding that real scientists around the world come up with different solutions, you know, or different conclusions to the same, the same question. And that's why we have scientists trying to duplicate each other's work to see, is that really valid?
I think that's really exciting for our students. Thank you. That's all the questions.
Mrs. Jacobson has questions?
I do. I just have a few. Thanks. Just again, reiterating, thank you so much for the presentation. And I know this is a huge lift for everyone in the science department and, and doing a great job. So, thank you very much to everyone that came and has helped you with that process. I have a little bit more pragmatic questions for us. The last time you guys were here, you mentioned that finding materials right now was a challenge. I kind of looked at myself a little bit. There's a little bit for middle school, a little bit for high school. I saw very little for our elementary school out there, especially even following the state's own links, that they're like, oh, we have all this stuff for you and really not so much. So, are you finding it's getting better? Do you have a textbook that you've identified at this point? Because I know last time you hadn't. So, just an update on where you're at with the actual stuff.
The resource piece.
Yeah.
So, our plan right now is we're going to continue to use our current resources. We're adding Chromebooks to all of the high school classrooms and to all of grade seven. So, we're beginning that, you know, that rollout. But all of the high schools, excuse me, the high school science classrooms will be outfitted with a classroom set of Chromebooks. The Chromebooks will really be a tremendous help, as Dr. Kelly talked about, because we, first of all, you know, science is an ever-changing thing. So, as soon as we, we order a textbook, something in it is no longer true. But the other thing is NGSS is not necessarily based in a textbook. So, the textbooks that we're using, we're using for resources on, on facts and pieces of information. And those don't change that, like chemistry is, hasn't changed much in, you know, 20... is, hasn't changed much in, you know, 20 years. There are new discoveries, but I mean, basic, you know, high school chemistry, the facts haven't changed a whole lot in 20 years. So, we're also looking at, we've, we've already started creating a list of digital resources that will support this work. And, you know, a lot of it is open source, things from universities, MIT, things like that. We have some subscriptions to websites that we use. And then, just accessing, you know, scientific journals and articles that students can use as opposed to a textbook. That's our plan right now. We are continuing our search, and we do expect to be bringing you some resources in the 18, 19 school year. But, right now, you know, rather than go ahead and bring you something that's sort of okay, we'd rather continue the search. And I know that there's one, one publisher who is coming out with something in September that, they've shown me a preview of it for high school. It looks pretty amazing. So, I'm anxious to see the, the full, the full thing, so that I can, you know, we can really evaluate it and see if that's a good match for us.
Okay. So, they won't have an actual textbook?
Well, they'll have their current textbooks.
The current ones right now. And elementary, I assume, is the same, or middle school is the same?
Right. Elementary, we are not going to be full implementation next year. We are, you know, upon approval, we really would love to dive into the River Lab portion and focus our attentions there. We do have one of the greatest resources available to us, the River, as well as many resources that we also are looking online. As I mentioned before, some of the nonfiction texts are some things that we're continually looking at and purchasing. And, it's, it's repurposing the resources that we currently have in our buildings, and thinking about how are we using them from a phenomenon standpoint as opposed to presenting fact standpoint. So, that, that is where we're going. And again, part of our focus really is about building teacher content knowledge and, and professional development initially. And, as far as the market goes, there are a couple of promising resources that are coming online that we're, we're, are looking at. Again, we are not bringing anything forward this evening.
Okay.
But, there are some companies that are really paying attention to not just the next-generation science standards, but the intent behind them. And that's typically what we find. We'll find multiple companies that will put the stamp on it that don't really align with the intent behind it. But, there are some companies that are paying attention to that, so we're looking forward to that.
Okay. Thanks so much. I just wanted an update on that. A couple other questions that I had. The, um, these other people asked about the evaluation piece, so that was one of my questions. But, just piggybacking on that a little bit, your answer is, you know, how they come to an answer, and more of an inquiry-based instruction model, having more than one answer be okay. But, however, the state mastery exam is one right answer. Is it right? I mean, so, it's just, it's a, you know what I'm saying? Like, you're teaching them one way, and we're trying to move to this new model, but yet then, there is this thing at the end that doesn't really match that.
Actually, there's more than one right answer to the state assessment.
On the, on the state assessment?
Yeah. So, the state, the state assessment is interesting. If, if you haven't had an opportunity to look at it, I'd be happy to send you out the link so you could look through it. But, one of the big differences between our current, well, the old assessment and our, what will be our new assessment, is that there are multiple right answers. And there are, there are questions, and, you know, I defer to, to Dr. Kelly. Even on the AP test, there are questions that say, "Choose all the right answers." So, it could be...
But, that's still ending up with one right answer by choosing the right answers. Right. I mean...
A lot, when, when the students have to actually do an experiment, they have to pick which variable they're going to test, and they can test more than one. So, there's more than one way of getting at it, and then they have to decide how they're going to test it. And this is all assessed on the test. They're, they're clicking and dragging certain things into spaces. So, the state assessment really has done a pretty good job of mirroring the way that they're asking us to deliver this, this curriculum.
Okay, great. That's good news. Knowing that we are in a transition phase, and some of our grades are going to be a bit of a disadvantage going into that, are we contemplating not using any of this for at least a bit of time in terms of any placement decisions as they move forwards? For instance, if they don't necessarily do so well on that, it won't be a consideration into what teacher might recommend for high, for middle, for high school?
Are you talking about the test?
Yeah.
Well, we, we generally don't, don't use that to begin with. We don't, we don't use capped scores to determine teacher recommendation.
Not to determine, but as a piece of the...
We've never, we've never used that, that kind of thing. We tend, we do tend to use SBA information for reading level, simply because the resources that teachers are using with students, you know, in an honors class, for example, at the high school, are at a much higher reading level than in a college preparat-, you know, so, so we tend to try to look at those kinds of things, but...
Science, you won't be.
We won't be.
Okay. All right. Great. And, and just, congrats on the course enrollment. I think it's all the new names that made them sound so fantastic. So, that's really exciting to hear that so many of them are...
Yeah. We're, we're very excited about it. And, you know, I think this has been a long time coming. And so, we're, we're anxious to get, you know, get going and, and roll this out, and have some fun.
Great. Thanks so much. That's all for me. Thanks.
Other questions from board members on the science curriculum presented to us? Seeing none, this will be on the first meeting in May for adoption and action. As reported, there won't be any textbook approvals concurrent with that for the new board members. While curriculum needs five votes to get approved, which has not generally been a problem, textbooks by an 1880s state law require six votes. And so, sometime next year, I understand by your answer, we may be asked to approve a textbook. With no further, thank you very much, not only for your presentation, but for the support you have sitting behind you.
Yeah. We, we want to extend our thanks to those folks again. Without them, we couldn't have gotten this done, so they deserve a lot of credit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, if you're all leaving, we'll see if there's anybody from the public who wants to come forward to make a comment on, public comment on any agenda item. So, any member of the public that wishes to come forward and speak to the board on any agenda item that is here, please feel free to come forward at this time. I am presuming the people standing up are leaving and not coming down to the desk, so we'll move on. Onto old business. There is no old business, new business. This is the time that we established the date for graduation, so the recommended motion is that the Board of Education, is that the Board of Education establish Wednesday, June 20th, 2018 at 6:00 PM as the date and time of graduation for Fairfield-Ludlow High School and Fairfield Ward High School. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerbert, do I have a second? Mrs. Jacobson? Does the superintendent wish to make any comments on the date?
The only comment that I would like to make, just because I've had some questions from the public, is that is the earliest date that we can graduate, by the way that our calendar is set. We must be in school a minimum of 180 days. And if you remember, Fairfield-Ludlow had a pipes issue first. So, this allows both high schools to still graduate on the same night, and both, both of them be at 180 days. We could have pushed it back to the last day of school, which was the Thursday. But, we also heard from some families who, because we are graduating so late in June, there are several universities that actually do their orientations, and that's the last one before they go into summer. And they had requested that if we could consider where they can still make it to their orientations, it would be greatly appreciated. So, we've set that for June 20th.
Questions from the board? Mr. Peterson?
I have, I have no real objection to this. I just, I'm curious how this may conflict possibly with middle school and elementary school graduations.
My understanding right now in middle school is they are, they are doing theirs on the 21st. I don't know if I have any middle school people to still confirm, but we were just talking about that today.
Any other questions from board members? I actually thought it was going to be on the 21st, and I'd have my wife there, and we'd celebrate our 49th wedding anniversary at a graduation. Most of you think that wouldn't be qualified as a date night, but... Mr. Asa?
I just have a question. And it might just be because I'm new, but just going back, is this a deviation to what is normal? I mean, I know you, you mentioned about a few families had expressed concern. I'm not going to object to this, but I guess my figure is, you know, the last day of school is the 21st. And in past practice, if you could just let us know...
We did something similar last year. I don't, I don't, I can't go back 10 years. It used to. I know, in theory, having it on the last day of school is ideal. But, we are, we are late this year for students who, wanting to take summer school in college and, and get to their orientations. So, I mean, I think it is the best that meets everybody's needs this year. Not that every year we'd want to do that. I actually would like to look at in May or June, bringing to the board a little bit different calendar where we can have our graduation date set, and we don't have to change it, or look at it again in April. If we had 185-day calendar set from the beginning of the year, and we set our graduation date, we would not have to look at that every April. Because, as you know, we, we get the phone calls from somebody who has their aunt or somebody coming from England, and they're trying to get their flights. And it is hard on families, but that's something we would have to look at, we would have to discuss. But, the law does allow us to do that.
Because I understand those people, you know, with people coming in and whatnot. But, on the flip side, when we approve the calendar, it does specifically state how that will happen with days added and everything. So, one more question. Setting this for June 20th, what if we do have another cancellation?
Because it's after April, we're actually legally okay to still graduate on the 20th. It all has to do with the time of the year, and it has to do with how your calendar is set. And they, actually, the commissioner sent us all out a reminder, because everybody in the region is dealing with the same thing, where, you know, we had the law so that we could all make sure we were staying within that. But, that's why some districts around us are actually graduating like on the 16th or the 17th, yet everybody in this region has had between seven and, I think the most days was 10 or 11.
So, since, since we're in April, not after April, since in April, there's a, there's a caveat. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? This is a voting item, so we'll go out to the public for public comment on this voting item of setting the high school graduation date. Anybody wish to come forward? Please come forward. State your name and address.
Hi, I'm Emma Vanderbilt.
If you would, sit down so that, you may not realize it, but you're on TV.
Hello. I'm Emma. I live on Woodcrest Road. And so, as far as the graduation dates, I'm legally required to go to onsite staff training in Litchfield, Connecticut for a camp I work at, the 16th through the 24th. Last year, that was possible, with the graduation date being the 15th was my last final day. I was able to get out. The conflict this year is, I'm a senior at Fairfield-Ludlow, and we offer the senior internship programs. And I'm dividing my internship into three different, shadowing different high, health teachers and the health coordinator in the district. And for my last internship, I'll be at both high school and middle school level classes. And my question basically is, is there any, any sort of alternate as far as the internship program? Because it's creating a lot of different conflicts with both my internships and other internships that I'm aware of, with other people working at different summer programs. And it definitely conflicts with the legal requirements for me to be able to work at that summer program later on in the year.
Okay. Thank you. For public comment, we don't normally respond to questions, but if your question is not so much the graduation date, but the internship program, you might want to ask the people who run that internship program, it's the same last name.
Yeah. Yes, I spoke with your wife today.
If there's, if there's any help that she can give you.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to come forward to speak on an agenda item? Hearing none, on to discussion of... Oh, yeah. Sorry. Now that we're back with public comment. All in favor of the motion that the Board of Education establish Wednesday, June 20th, 2018 at 6:00 PM as the date and time of graduation for Fairfield-Ludlow High School and Fairfield Ward High School? Raise your hand, please. One, two, three, four, five. Unanimous with seven people attending. Thank you very much. Now, onto item 7B, discussion of possible 2018, 19 budget changes. I'll have the superintendent make a comment. I'll make a comment, and any board members may make comments as well.
Well, as, as we've journeyed through this week, actually, I'm very positive about where we are, in that we did make an adjustment with the Board of Selectmen on the $60,000 pension that we could actually reduce after we got the numbers. We also were able to reduce our budget by 190,000 because of the recently signed bus contract, which does put our budget at 2.95%. When we were in front of the Board of Finance this week, they did approve the budget 9-0, which, you know, was, we were very thankful for. Last night, we were in front of the RTM for questions, and there were no questions, not one, which was, it was worth sitting there two hours, really, to have no questions. So, so we're sitting in a very good spot, I feel like, right now, with the budget very positive.
Yeah. I, I want to thank, I'll say Dr. Jones, but Mrs. Muncell, and all of the staff. As you know, during the budget cycle, we'll get a question from an elected public official, and they expect the answer, like in the email, right away. But, frequently, they expect the answer in time for the next meeting. And so, it takes a lot of work on the part of the staff to, to make sure they get the right information, that it's accurate. So, I want to thank the staff under Dr. Jones's leadership for responding to them, so that there weren't any open questions that might cause them to then say, "Well, perhaps we shouldn't approve something." And I think that was helpful. So, I do look forward to the RTM meeting with a positive vote, that I think is signal of, of, of no questions last night, gives us some assurance of, of that vote. And so, at the moment, the only official budget changes that we will have to vote on in May is those two adjustments that Dr. Jones just mentioned. As far as I'm understanding from Mrs. Muncell, there isn't any other contract or known thing that will change between now and the May vote. And of course, if it changes afterwards, the staff have to adjust as they do every year. One other comment. Some of you know that there was some conversation about the AON question as to how much we actually saved at the Board of Finance, and many of you were at that meeting. And I've tried to, for an RTM member, I summarized it in this way. We wanted to confirm that it still made sense for us to switch to Partnership 2.0. And as a result of that, we asked AON to say, "You told us we probably would save 3.5 million. Could you give us an update on that?" What was unknown to us as a board or to the staff is that AON had a challenge of saying, "Shall we use a limited database from the current Partnership 2.0 claims experience?" Which they didn't have a lot of faith in. Or, should we use the only claims experience we have, but it's older? So, we have to trend it forward more than just 12 months. They chose the latter. In hindsight, I think what they said is, "We should have just said to the Board of Ed, 'Neither database is good to work off of, so why don't you wait for a while, and then we can give you a better answer.'" This March, they had enough of a database, so the real answer, real actual savings is $2.6 million, not the $5 million that they were projecting. Now, having said that, that is still a... Now, having said that, that is still a good savings and it will continue to grow. I think the decision was still good for us. And if you saw the map of the school districts and towns who switched to Partnership 2.0, it does favor Fairfield County. We have a little higher cost basis for our healthcare and sharing it with 300,000 lives throughout the state is helpful. So at the end of the day, it was a lot of discussion, but two clear answers. Next year, we won't have to talk about projections because it will be a simple math. How many lives? What's the percentage increase in the insurance premium? And there's our budget. So in the past, we used to have a lot of debate and discussion on Aon's projection methodology and that's kind of behind us now. Any questions on the budget changes? I thank board members for getting to the various meetings. I think every time people see members of the Board of Education in the audience, that is helpful. Onto approval of the minutes. You'll note that this is the first time where we've officially put a combined motion. In the future, if any board member wants to separate one of the minutes out because they need to make a correction, just say that. But in the future, you'll see that we'll have one motion for all minutes. And so the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special meeting of March 19th, 2018. In the regular meeting of March 19th, 2018, do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, followed by Ms. Leeper. Any questions? No? All in favor? Please raise your hand. It's unanimous, it's six in favor of Mrs. Leeper, Ms. Leeper, Mrs. Gerber, Fieldwire, Mrs. Jacobson, Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli, Mr. Peterson. Any no? No no's? Any abstentions? It is custom for, to abstain for, when you're absent from a meeting. So the motion passes 6...
01.
01. Superintendent's report.
I just have a couple of things tonight. I do want to point out, we have new banners behind us and they're beautiful. This is a project that our students at both high schools are working with the town development on a, on a making place around town. These are actually going to be made into posters and they'll hang at the metro stations. You're going to see them everywhere and so it's just a wonderful joint effort. We do have five more that will be coming in due time and one of those will actually feature the school system because that is an important part of our town. So congratulations to all those students. I was able to visit Walter Fitzgerald and a project they have going right now, which is a generosity project in hope. And the, the students have just done a phenomenal job with the project. And when I was over there today, every, whenever people are visiting, whether that's a custodian perhaps that's there and the students, you know, are interacting with, or they have a guest in the building, they've made these bracelets, which are kind of what they consider "hope" bracelets, and they're all hanging on the mural. And then they're giving these bracelets out and the students actually made all of the beads, well, all of the clay beads by hand. They've been fired. And then they come with these messages of hope, like joyful living and, you know, enjoy life. And it's just, it's part of their community at Walter Fitzgerald. And although it's the oldest building really, as far as how it looks, what's going on inside that school is just amazing. So I just want to give them a shout out. It's fantastic.
So I was at someplace, I won't say where, and a guy recognizes my face and says, oh, let me show you this bracelet. Was that, not this bracelet, but one exactly like that. And he said, well, my wife teaches at Walter Fitzgerald and every weekend, these get fired at her home with her husband and herself, certainly going above and beyond the call of duty to, to do that for students so that they would support their project. So I just thought I'd mention that. Please continue.
That's awesome. And it's actually when she's heating her house. It's her, goes in the fire. We, we have also, just as a follow-up for the public, we did have, you know, the safety forum, which was, you know, very well attended that night. And just to assure the board and the public that the police and the school system are continuing to follow up on any of those comments that were made. We've had an elementary meeting with all of the leadership team. We've had middle school meeting, high school meeting. And you're probably, if you, if you have students in certain areas, will notice some changes on things like high school where the doors are not open as long in the morning, for instance, before school where they were unattended. They've also reduced the points of entry, especially at Ward where almost every door was open in the morning, and now they've limited that. And again, that's working with the police on safety. We've also, we're assessing the blinds around the district. A lot of the teachers said when they go into lockdown, some of them have blinds that were broken and they can't shut their windows. So we're doing an assessment of that. We have a couple of parents who have reached out, who want to do fundraising-type campaign and the finance committee this week discussed that, that, you know, the blinds may be something, depending on what it looks like, that we could actually work with the community to help with. So then the last thing I'll mention is we do have the search for the Sherman principal. Eileen Roxby is retiring. And we have done the meeting with parents and got great feedback on what the parents are looking for. And their next principal, we've had our meeting with the staff and they've provided that input. We also issued a survey to staff, parents, community, and then we overlay where their answers are. So out of 12 traits, for instance, they'll pick, what are the tops, you know, six is what, and kind of put them in order. And the really interesting thing, which is great, is the parents and the staff matched exactly on their top six and almost in the same order. Like, it was like a number one was a number two, but that's really good because it means that when you're looking at the candidates, it's, it narrows it a little bit in what you're looking for. And we feel really good about the candidate pool for Sherman. So we'll keep you updated as we're going through the process.
Any questions for our superintendent on the items that she reviewed? Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli?
Just one quick question, tying back into the budget. With the work that's going on at Walter Fitzgerald campus, are we, have we been able to make any steps forward with advertising it as a place for possibly other districts to, or is that not part of any conversations at present?
I see Mr. Mancusi making his way forward.
Good evening. Rob Mancusi, Director of Special Ed. We're currently working on a pamphlet for Walter Fitzgerald. I know Mrs. Donowitz has done some preliminary work on that. We've had some discussions. Once the pamphlet is complete, I was going to go to the Fairfield County's, you know, our con case meetings for Directors of Special Education and share that with them.
Any other questions? Mrs. Jacobson?
Sorry, 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 sorry.
Not so quick.
Just following up with that. The pamphlet meaning invitation to possibly join the school?
It's the pamphlet to share what the program is and the services it provides and the student...
Meaning it would be open, and where we are opening it, is that...
The idea is to potentially open a couple of slots to...
Prior to the current board, we did approve, so we're on record as a Board of Education to allow up to five spots for people outside of the district.
Thank you for answering that for me.
Thank you.
Okay, on to committee and liaison reports. Anybody have things that they want to talk about? Mr. Asa first, Mr. Peterson second?
Just a, nothing major on Holland Hill, but they were having a meeting tonight that coincided with ours, so obviously no representation there. But they are, they were working on receiving updated information on the demo and abatement bids and just seems like they're moving along pretty well.
And you didn't get any call from the chairman saying, you really ought to show up because we've got a real problem that he knew about?
We may have had some communications, but nothing to that effect.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Peterson?
Well, I know we were all at the Board of Finance meeting except for Mrs. Cannelli, who was live tweeting it from home. But for the, for the sake of the record and for the public at home, the, our budget was approved unanimously by the Board of Finance, but there are also two other items that they dealt with. There was also unanimous approval of the Phase 3 project at Sherman School. There was a far more involved back and forth conversation about the Mill Hill renovation. There was concern about whether we should identify it currently as a 504 school or perhaps another side, a size. That range, that discussion covered a lot of ground, but ultimately, the Board of Finance approved the motion with the amendment that various sizes be explored and that they get a report from a building committee once it's formed.
And on behalf of the Board of Education, I represented that that seemed like an appropriate thing to do. I've also represented that the Board of Education believes that in the long-term best interest of the town, that school should be a 504. But if cost is a factor, based on what's in the waterfall chart, that the building committee ought to come back to the Board of Ed to say, here's where we are and will you adjust? And that's an issue, I think, and I think we convinced the Board of Finance to say, let's get the information and make that decision next spring. Any further you want to comment on that, Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli? I think Mrs. Jacobson might have had a question as well.
So in policy, we had started with the policy regarding the use of social media in the schools and we have put that on hold as we begin. We had the preliminary round with Mr. Cummings regarding high school graduation requirements. So we have, really had a good full hour of discussion on that this past Tuesday and look forward to really jumping in both feet. Our next policy meeting is on the 24th and as of now, I see no reason we wouldn't be on schedule for having that to the full board for discussion and vote at our two June meetings.
Any questions for the Policy Committee or the Board of Finance Committee? Mrs. Leeper?
Dr. Jones touched on it, but for our first regular finance meeting, we talked about exploring sponsorships and specifically, the district would benefit from finding funds to cover the cost of the blinds. So we're looking into that and just making sure there's no legal requirements around how you do advertising and sponsorships and that sort of thing. And then also, we got a really extensive document about all of the ways in which the district already collaborates with the town. And I knew that a lot of those things were new information for me and it was really interesting and maybe something other people might be interested in also.
I was at the organizational meeting for the Board of Finance and I'll say that it struck me that this idea of sponsorships may have some legs. And so if anybody has viewpoints on that question from the Board of Ed, you really ought to share them with the members of the Board of Finance, with the Finance Committee so that they don't come forward with some plan that, that doesn't reflect the Board's thinking, since this is a brand-new subject and we've never talked about it before. So feel free to do so. Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli?
And just to follow up on that, I had been in touch with Ms. Leeper as Chair of the Finance Committee regarding policy because it had been on our agenda as one of our future items. And so we've struck that from there to turn it over to the Finance Committee because we don't want to be creating policy for something that then, I can't imagine it not being financially feasible or, you know, something that's a positive, but we decided to put it into their court. And obviously, Ms. Leeper and I will be in touch if it needs to come back, that it's looking to go forward and that it does have policy implications.
Any other questions? Mrs. Gerber?
Well, actually, this goes back to the discussion about the Board of Finance meeting regarding the Mill Hill and the amendment made. I know I asked Dr. Jones the other day after the meeting. Do we have any clarification yet as to whether, you know, because I know they were saying that the Board of Selectmen has to now reapprove the bonding resolution and I just wasn't sure how that worked out. You know, will Mill Hill be able to be with Sherman going to the RTM this month or did they have to wait?
I, I did speak with the First Selectman late today and he was able to confirm that we're good to go to the RTM. From the language perspective, what it really changes is his charge to the building committee. And that's what he is reviewing closely, but it's him, so we don't have to wait and go back to Board of Selectmen before we go to RTM.
Great, thank you.
And you know that both building committees have been advertised to the public. I also spoke with the First Selectman to indicate that there is a certain amount of time to get resumes, vet them, interview them and get them ready to move forward through all the boards and that I had hoped that he would aggressively move those forward so that once this question of the charge was worked out, there wasn't, there was, they weren't going to delay the process of getting the building committee empaneled and while they're waiting to work out this little question of the, of the charge. And he assured me that they would try and go down both sides of the tracks at the same time so that we would not lose time. Mr. Asa?
Yeah, just following up on Mrs. Gerber and what you said, Dr. Jones. So did I misunderstand? I thought that I heard the attorney say that because the bonding resolution language changed with the amendment, that the Board of Selectmen actually had to vote on it again.
What I was told today, talking to the First Selectman, is that because it's a minor change. It wasn't a major, a major change to the language, so it does not have to go back.
Okay, okay.
Mrs. Jacobson?
Just a, I know that it was covered in the Board of Finance meeting about the amendment in that we created the ultimate sizes to be included in that preliminary work with the seed funding. I was just wondering if Mr. Cullen had anticipated any additional costs due to that amendment in terms of doing some extra work on it, as, or if that would just be sufficient?
He's shaking his head no?
No, I didn't see.
So through the superintendent...
Didn't see you back there, Mr. Cullen, sorry.
And the superintendent is answering on his behalf that the 1.5 million should be sufficient, especially if we let the architect and engineers that we're hiring know in advance. This is part of their charge. It's always when you give something to an architect and engineer after they've started their work...
Right.
That, that they give an opportunity to say, well, this is a change and it's going to cost you more. So, no, we anticipate that we'll be able to do that within the 1.5.
Okay, thank you.
Any other committee liaison reports from the board? If not, let me make a couple of comments. I was at the CES board meeting today and some of you know that Evan Pitco is, is retiring and the board by action hired, offered Mr. Charles Dumay, who is currently with the Amity Regional School District Number 5 in Woodbridge, to be the new CES executive and he'll start on July 1. We have two liaison positions. The administrator's contract that needs to be staffed, if you will, from a board member. I've asked a board member if they would take that charge on and so if, if that is not possible, I'll need to come to somebody else. And if there's any other changes to liaison positions that I'm, should be made aware of, let me know so I can get somebody to cover that as well. And the last, maybe... No, that's it for the committee liaison reports. Any other committee liaison reports? If not, on to open board comment. Any other comments on the open board? Mr. Asa?
I have a couple of things. First, with regards, I guess this is comments, I can't really ask a question, but maybe you can make a comment in response to my comment. With regards to the Mill Hill and the amendment and the 378, 441, 504, we, we put forth an edspec with 504. So obviously with these potential scenarios coming back, I'm just throwing it out there and wondering if it's something that we need to get back on the agenda to discuss or is it something, do we need to start working on some sort of district-wide plan to further justify, you know, what we put forth? So just wanted to make that comment. And then the second one is, I'd also like to know if it's possible in May, at the next, at the May meeting, the regular meeting, if we could get an update, kind of like we did in the past, on those funds that were reallocated to a reserve account and whatnot? Because looking in the budget book, I see an appropriated amount for 1718 and an estimated expenditure for 1718. And there's a difference, you know, of that 600-something thousand dollars that's been floated. But I guess I'm curious as to have, have we, or are we going, now that we know our financial stance per se, are we going to be spending the money that was allocated to us by the town bodies for 1718 on those line items that may have been redirected or reallocated to avoid any, I guess if you want to call them cuts, that were made in essence? So I'm not sure if you need me to clarify that or if that makes sense, but in the past, you've provided us, you know, some documentation. I think, I wasn't at the February meeting, but I think, I, I watched it and... the February meeting, but I think, I watched it, and there was made mention that we'd be getting a document, you know. So I don't know if that's coming, and I know, you know, work has to go into that. But there was talk about the, you know, special ed tuition, and ECS cuts, and did or didn't happen. So there's money here, and the word surplus has been floated. But I'm just a little confused, and would hope that we could maybe discuss and clarify that at a future meeting. Because to me, the way I look at this, it doesn't seem like a surplus if we haven't spent the money that was appropriated.
You're correct in your initial statement. This is open board comment. It's not a chance to have a discussion on a topic that's not on the agenda. And so you may want to follow up directly with Dr. Jones. But yes, I'm sure at a future meeting, probably in May, there'll be an update on where we stand financially.
The quarterly is due.
You know, the quarterly is due at that time, and so the subject will come up naturally.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Jacobson.
Did you say the quarterly is in May? Okay, all right, great. I would echo Mr. Asa's comment. It would be great if we could possibly have a discussion on that in May, and just any follow-up current status of that. I guess we will, because it's in May.
The quarterly financial report will be on a May agenda, and that will be a time to talk about it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Ms. Leeper, open board comment.
And I don't know if you can comment and correct me if I'm mistaken, but it was brought up by the Board of Finance that there was some confusion around the way in which open choice students are factored into our projections. And my understanding is that we have 65 open choice students, and the projections assume that we are not asking those 65 students to leave the district, and some will matriculate out throughout the duration of the tenure projection. But it's not factoring in new open choice students coming in, but rather just the existing open choice students that we have in this district. That was my understanding. And Melona McBroom said that they'll continue at current levels. And the word "levels," I think, was a little bit confusing, at least I found it a little confusing, as if it was maybe like a rate at which we were admitting open choice students. And I think it's actually just those students, we're not asking them to leave the district. So unless I'm mistaken and anyone wants to make a correcting comment, that's all I wanted to say.
Not wanting to get into the, we opened up discussion on an item. I think you're probably more or less correct, but follow up with Dr. Jones to clarify. A couple of things. One, we will need an executive session to have a discussion on our stance relative to the parent negotiations and the administrator's contract negotiations. Generally, those, the issues we deal with come up later in the negotiations, so it's not a rush. But before May is out, I'm sure that we'll have to have some executive session on those two topics. So prepare for that on your calendars. And the second April meeting is our self-evaluation meeting. You each received an email with a tool that Cave wants you to fill out. Please fill it out and get it to them, so that they don't have to call me and say, I've only heard from three out of nine, and then I have to harass you. And actually, I won't. I'll just harass Meg to harass you. So please, while it's fresh in your mind, please get it to them. If there are any specific topics that you think you'd want to cover, feel free to let me know, or let Bob Rader know, or put it down in that comments section on the evaluation, so that he is better prepared to help facilitate the meeting. Any further open board comment? Seeing none, back to the public. Any member of the public wish to come forward? Please do.
Hi, my name's Sylvia Figel, Twinbrooks Lane. I think I meant to give my address. It's my first meeting.
Welcome.
Thank you. And we're a new family here in Fairfield. I'm a parent of a kindergartner at Mill Hill. I was here on Tuesday. What a meeting, but with a very good outcome, and let's hope it all keeps going through. And I have a younger one, a two-year-old as well, so we're in it with Mill Hill for a while. So that was exciting. So as a new parent to elementary schools, living in the times we live in today, my question is to Dr. Jones. I've been to Mill Hill a few times, you know, read a story, the Kane presentation, or what have you. And what struck me is that the internal doors are open to the classrooms. And so in being concerned about my child's safety, and all the children, as you all are, and in spending time reading, like, what, you know, what is out there as those that are not in the security community that can read about just basic safety standards? And after all the shootings that have happened over the last 10 years, you know, what's being published for parents to read, and so on and so forth? And there seems to be a common theme of, you know, some basic things that can happen, like keeping the doors closed. When we were deciding to move to Fairfield, we spent a lot of time investigating towns in Westchester. That's my only point of reference, Dr. Jones. And every elementary school I was able to visit and get a tour of, there was five, every single one had that as part of the procedure. The doors are always closed, they're locked, so that way the teachers don't have to go and close them. And I know we have the magnetic strips, and it makes it easy for them, and all of that kind of stuff. So my question to you, is sorry after that long introduction, is that on your agenda of topics to discuss for school security? Is putting in place a procedure to have those doors always closed, so that way that's not one extra step that the parent, the teacher has to do? And then the other question is, as we're about to redo Mill Hill, and that's what I'm concerned about, the entrance point, there's one door. There's that nice little camera, you press the buzzer, and assuming someone's looking at my face, and then you enter, and that's it, and you're in. If you're going to do harm, you're not going to go left into that lovely little office to like check in, like I do, because I'm a parent, and that's where I go. So is there a plan in the security procedure as part of this renovation to put in like a second entrance, and then to also have equipment or something to scan a driver's license, or something like that, to validate I am who I am, and to like put in some extra barriers? So those are my two questions, if that's on your agenda for discussion.
So a couple of comments. One, welcome
Thank you.
... to your first Board of Education meeting. I do say that we welcome public comment, but this is not an opportunity for a back-and-forth questioning.
Got it, yep.
Twice a year, we have town meetings where we do have that, and we just recently had a security meeting
Yep.
... where we had that opportunity as well. I might suggest that you visit Riverfield School.
Yep.
If you're wondering what's going to happen at Mill Hill, Riverfield School would be a good example about the vestibule. And if you're having questions about the security, I think the best person to ask is the principal. And we do have a school safety unit led by a lieutenant from the Police Department. And if you wanted to follow up directly with him, we, as a board, generally, no, consistently do not talk about security in a public setting.
Sure, sure. Fair enough. So I'll follow those directions.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And is there opportunity to speak with Dr. Jones?
Absolutely.
Do you interact with parents?
No, no.
Yes, just email me, and I can give you a call. Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks so much.
I got an email this afternoon from a parent. So I forwarded it to Dr. Jones, and before the afternoon was out, she said, thank you, because somebody called me back. That's how quickly I think Dr. Jones and the staff try to respond to parents' concerns. No further public comment? If not, we'll on to adjournment. The recommended motion that this regular meeting of the Board of Education adjourned. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Ms. Leeper. All in favor, please raise your hand. It's 7:00. Thank you very much. The meeting is adjourned.
Bye.